Hello and welcome to the Monday, April 25th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 21st, 2022 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. Mr. Eckert, take your role.
Mr. Gillette? Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Laningbeater? Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here. We have a quorum. All right, we are having a plan to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is a personnel legal matter; the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in executive session. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to the Monday, April 25th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag. (Inaudible) One nation, under God, equal to all.
Could we please take roll?
Mr. Gillette? Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Laningbeater? Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a walk-on resolution that we are going to read. Be resolved by the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, herein referred to as "the board," as followed, as follows: Number one, the board hereby approves the request for a leave of absence with pay through 11:59 PM on May 1st, 2022, by an employee whose name is on file in the acting superintendent's office. Two, the board hereby approves the resignation of said employee effective 11:59 PM on May 1st, 2022. Three, the terms, stipulation, and conditions of the confidential separation agreement and general release annexed to this resolution are hereby adopted and approved by the Board of Education. The board president and business administrator, board secretary, are hereby authorized and directed to execute the attached confidential separation agreement and general release, and any other documents necessary to effectuate the same. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any comments? All right, seeing none, we will move to roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we will move on and acknowledge the correspondences as listed, and with that, we will move on to the most exciting part of the evening, the budget review. I know that's what you're all here for. All right, so we're going to open with Item 6.1, public hearing on the school budget. There will be a presentation provided, and we will then have the opportunity for any of the members of the public to comment specifically on the budget, three-minute limit, same as any other public comment session, and then we'll move on to approving that.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. So I'll begin tonight's presentation of the Hillsborough Township Public Schools 2022-2023 Budget with a brief review of the budget process. The budget process typically starts in October by estimating the maximum revenue, including the tax levy, the state and federal aid, and other sources of miscellaneous revenue such as interest, building rental fees, activity fees, and tuition, to name a few. The next steps in our process is for the individual budget managers to submit their budget requests, and for the business office and HR office to project salaries and benefits for the next fiscal year, basically estimating all the appropriations for the next year. Once the revenue and appropriation estimates are done, administration works with all budget matters to balance the budget based on whatever reductions may be needed if it is indeed a deficit that we need to close, which unfortunately this year was definitely a definite deficit that we needed to close. Now we'll get into a little bit of the details of some of the revenues that are in, that make up this year's budget. This slide highlights the general fund revenue. As you see here, this budget includes a significant increase in budget to fund balance, which is also known as our surplus. The increase in fund balance is $1.2 million. Other areas of this portion of our revenue include the general fund is the tax levy, which is increasing by the maximum allowable 2%, which totals just over $2 million this year. The general fund revenue also includes state aid, which has been cut by $1.4 million this year, and it also includes areas for use of capital maintenance reserve funds, which, as you see on the slide here, are reduced to $3.3 million than what we have used in the current 2021-22 budget. Overall, the general fund revenue is decreasing by approximately $1.9 million, which is about a 1.43% decrease. The next portion of the revenue that you see is the special revenue fund, and the revenue here also, this slide also includes our debt service revenue. The special revenue fund is made up of state and federal grants, which are basically flat compared to the '21-'22 school year. The debt service revenue is reduced by about $630,000, or 22.5%. And the main reason for this decrease is that the bonds from a 2001 referendum have been fully paid off, so there are no payments for that in this proposed '22-23 budget. As you'll see later in the presentation, this reduction contributes significantly to the decreased tax rate that we'll share with, share later in the presentation. Overall, total revenue for the 2022-23 school year is down two, just over 2.5 million This next slide shares some of our anticipated appropriations and kind of highlights the most significant areas of our budget, and how they compare it to the '21-'22 budget. Salaries are increasing by 1.1 million, benefits are increasing by 357,000, tuition is increasing by 112,000, supplies and textbooks are decreasing by 643,000, purchase services are down 183,000, transportation is increasing by about 376,000, maintenance and operations are increasing by $193,000, capital is decreasing by 3.3 million, as there are no capital projects in this budget, as we focus on wrapping up the referendum projects. State and federal grants are down by 832,000, which is mainly due to the ESTA funds that were received over the past year or so, and also debt service is down by, again, $630,000 from the prior year. In the final budget that we're presenting tonight, there are several changes that are occurring from the tentative budget, so I'm just going to run through those here pretty quickly. The first line that you see on the chart here is for improvement of instruction and is a supply account, so that, I'm sorry. We were preparing, let me start over again, so I'm sorry about that. As we were preparing the tentative budget, we received our state aid figures on Thursday, March 10th, and had to adopt the tentative budget on Monday, March 14th. We had to use placeholders, as we called them, in our long-term sub-accounts for some of the additional $704,000 that was cut from our state aid. We now have time to determine how we will manage the additional state aid cuts. And the first account in this chart that you see here is student, basically is based on student Chromebooks, which are charged to this 11000221600 account, and our Director of Technology, Joel Handler, was able to work with our providers for the equipment and identified a Chromebook that is basically identical to the ones that we were intending to get. The only difference is the model that we're getting now will not fully flip over to become a tablet, so it'll act just as the, as a laptop, and according to the discussion Mr. Handler has had, there are not a whole lot of students that have been using the tablet feature of our Chromebooks. So this is $109,000 reduction that will not really sacrifice any performance. The next two accounts are middle school and high school teachers' accounts, and these again where some of our placeholders were done to the long-term sub-accounts, so in these accounts, we are increasing them basically just to restore those placeholders. The next set of accounts is the elementary school teacher line, and this has the most adjustments that result in a reduction of $40,438. The items that were changed here started with restoring the long-term sub-places holders, budgeting for the breakage from a recently announced teacher at the top of the guide to the projected Step 1 salary, or the teacher who will, who will be hired to fill the vacancy, and a redesign of the elementary reach program that Dr. Feltry will explain in a few moments. In effect, the redesign will allow for the reduction of three FTEs at the elementary level that we expect to happen through attrition. The last account listed here is for employee benefits. This account has, also has several adjustments that net out to an increase of $20,052. In the tentative budget, we had budgeted a reduction to this line of $100,000, which was the anticipated cost of the five positions that were reduced in the previously mentioned placeholders. In the final budget, this amount was reduced to actual anticipated benefits for the three FTEs that I mentioned earlier. The last component of the change to this account was a reduction to the district's dental benefit costs. The renewal for the dental insurance has now been finalized and human slightly lower than what was projected, and was the final piece of the changes to this account. As you can see, these changes are a net zero, so there is no change to the budget resolution that the board will be considering tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Feltry to provide the details behind the elementary school reach program redesign.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. First, I would like to say that with the continual budget cuts over the last several years, we have reached the critical point where we are forced to find creative ways to continue providing services, instruction, and resources for our students. Additionally, when meeting with the administrators and board committees, none of the options to balance the budget were enthusiastically endorsed because they all directly impact our students in some way. The final outcome is being reluctantly accepted as the only plausible option to sufficiently balance the budget with the gap we had to bridge. While we do a fantastic job of providing reach services to our students and our teachers, are amazing at meeting the individualized needs of students in the reach program, we are always striving to do better for our students. During the discussion with the current reach teachers, we articulated that reach is less of a program and more of providing additional services, instructional services for our gifted and talented students. Now faced with the severe budgetary constraints, we are redesigning how we provide our elementary school reach services by repurposing human and financial resources. As we are redesigning our ASI programs to be in line with a response to intervention model, otherwise known as a tiered system of services, reach services are at one end of the response to intervention model, while intervention services are at the other end of the model. As an intermediary step during this transition period, reach services will be provided in conjunction with and in addition to media services library curriculum. We will be capitalizing on the overlap between the media services library and the reach curricula to provide increased enhancement opportunities for all students while providing additional services to our identified gifted and talented students. Providing reach services in the elementary schools under the auspices of a certified teacher at each building, as opposed to a shared service between schools, will provide the added benefit of the teacher being able to establish stronger relationships with other staff members with whom they work closely to provide the individualized attention and instruction for our identified gifted and talented students. While we have met with the teachers and have a plan for supporting staff during this transition, there are elements of the redesign that need to be finalized. We plan on holding a parent meeting in the near future to answer any questions and assure parents that there will be a continuation of reach services for our students. As I stated in the beginning, repeated state aid cuts have forced us into a budgetary situation that requires us to think creatively to continue to meet the many needs of our students. While we all detest the situation, we are approaching this situation as an opportunity to rethink how we provide reach services to our students. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Eckert.
Thank you. So when we adopted the tentative budget, we did not have all of the tax levy information available to include in that presentation, so tonight I'll go into the detail for the tax levy and tax impact for both Hillsborough and for Millstone. Starting with Hillsborough, this slide shows the calculation to determine the 2022 school tax rate per $100 of assessed value. To determine the 2022 tax rate, you combine half of the '21-'22 school year tax levy and half of the '22-'23 school year tax levy to get the 2022 tax levy for the township of Hillsborough. For the next several years, there will also be an adjustment to the Hillsborough levy to correct an error that was made over several school years where the percent share for Hillsborough and the percent share for Millstone was not correct. These percentages are provided by the state and need to be inputted into our software. The correct percent is being used now, but we need to correct the previous levies to make sure that both Hillsborough and Millstone have been charged the appropriate totals over the years. This year's adjustment adds $81,000 to the Hillsborough portion of the tax levy. The 2022 Hillsborough tax rate is now based on the revised levy of $104,303,56. The calculation to determine this rate is the 2022 tax levy revised divided by the 2022 assessed valuation, with this result being multiplied by 100. This year, the calculation results in a 2022 school tax, school tax rate per 100 of assessed value of 1.460. This rate is .1 lower than the 2021 tax rate. The factors that cause this reduction are an increase to the assessed valuation and a decrease in the district's debt service payments. This next chart shows 2022 tax rate per 100 of assessed value and the resulting annual and monthly tax amounts for the home values listed, and compares these numbers to the same numbers for 2021, which shows that the 2022 average home assessed at $465,511 will have an annual tax decrease of $463 and a monthly decrease of $39. And this table simply shows the Hillsborough school tax rate history for the past 10 years, with the 2022 proposed rate being a decrease of .1, which is a 6.3% decrease from 2021. And I know some of these charts are hard to read, but we'll post the presentation on our website tomorrow. Now on to Millstone. The calculation to determine the 22 school rate per 100 again for assessed value, again to determine the 22 tax rate in Millstone, you combine half of the '21-'22 school year tax levy and half of the '22-'23 school year tax levy to get the 22, 2022 tax levy for Millstone. And again, for the next several years, the adjustment that I mentioned earlier will happen again on the Millstone side, and the correct percentage is being used now again so that this, once we get through the next few years and correct this, it'll be just right going, going forward without having to make any adjustments. The adjustment again on the Millstone side is a reduction of $81,000. The 2022 Millstone tax rate is now based on the revised levy of $631,479.37. The calculation to determine this rate is the 2022 tax levy revised divided by the 22 assessed valuation, with the result being multiplied by 100. This year, the calculation results in a 2022 school tax rate per 100 of assessed value of 1.072. This rate is .157 lower than the 2021 tax rate, and again, the factors that cause this reduction are an increase to the assessed valuation. And here's the same table we showed for Hillsborough earlier, for 2022 tax rate per 100 of assessed value and the resulting annual and monthly tax amounts for the homes values listed, and compares these numbers to the same numbers for '21 in Millstone, which shows that the 22 average home assessed at $349,009 will have an annual tax decrease of $547 and a monthly decrease of $46. And again, this is just a table that simply shows Millstone school tax history for the past 10 years, the proposed 2022 rate being a decrease of .157, which is a 12.75% decrease from the 2021. And that concludes our presentation of the budget tonight, so if you have any questions.
All right, the public hearing on the 2023 budget provides the opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed budget. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to state your name and address. As always, there is a three-minute time limit on public comments, so if there are any individuals in the audience that would like to comment on the budget, please step forward.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, my fellow officers with me. I would like to start by saying first and foremost, I echo the sentiments of Dr. Feltry that this is not a choice that any of us are enthusiastically supporting. It's one that we've been forced to after years and years of finally reaching the bone when we've cut. And we're at a place now where 56 teachers, you know, wasn't enough in the past, and now we're looking at other ways that students are really being hurt, but the fact of the matter is, is that none of the people sitting up here made that choice, and our staff didn't make that choice. So we're left dealing with a situation that is beyond our control in some ways and not of our making in others, because even S2's calculations go back to boards from 15 years ago at this point. And with that in mind, what I would urge the board to do, and in fact urge the community to do, is seek to collaboratively address this, because we are at a breaking point within the district where we can no longer look to balancing in these ways. And to be clear, I do applaud the work that was done to find a way to do this in the least awful way, but as Dr. Feltry said, this still hurts students, this still hurts staff, it hurts the quality within our schools, and we have to get out of the mindset of making the best-worst decision when it comes to budgets. And there's no way we can maintain the rankings and recruit the people we need to for those rankings if that's where we are continuously forced to be. And I recognize again that much of that is beyond the control of everyone in this room. With that, you know, with that being said though, there's solutions that we can seek collaboratively, we can seek stabilization aid, we can seek to engage stakeholders across all spectrums and in all areas to have conversations, meaningful ones, about what can we do to support these schools that are the absolute cornerstone of our community, to make sure that we continue building them and stop seeking ways to balance them, that we're saying, this is just, we don't want to do this, but we have to because it's the least-worst decision, because at the end of the day, that trickles down to our students, it impacts our staff members, and I think every single person in this room collectively agrees that that's no longer acceptable. So I urge the board, I urge every stakeholder here and listening, to collaboratively come together and work towards finding some solutions on this so that we can break this cycle and make sure that we're protecting the best possible students, the best possible schools, the best possible staff in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there is no additional comments, we will close public comment for this. We will still have our two regularly scheduled public comment sessions later. All right, we will bring a handful of motions to the floor. 6.2, motion to approve the 2022-2023 school budget. 6.3, motion to approve the resolution for travel reimbursement expenses and maximum travel for the 2022-2023 school year. 6.4, motion to approve professional services maximum expenditures for the 2022-2023 school year. 6.5, motion to approve maintenance reserve withdrawal for the 2022-2023 budget. And 6.6, motion to approve corrective action plan for SEMI. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we will now move on to committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Kidd.
So I'm reporting the education committee report. One of the, we had multiple, we had two presentations, we got the budget presentation from our, we got the budget presentation at that meeting, and we had a very good summary about that, and we also had the school performance report, which will be, which will be shown to the public at the next board meeting. We also discussed two approvals, which are on the agenda today, for, for 12.3 for new course, and then also for the motion to approve the lower open source course and curriculum for our elementary school, and those generally seem procedural and all worked out. And then some of the last things we discussed were, we discussed the, the high school summer reading choice books, and three of which are on approval for the next meeting, and then one because of time constraints requires further discussion, requires, requires further discussion at the next, at the next committee meeting. Lastly, lastly, other than that, we were not able to get to school start times at this committee meeting due to time constraints, but we are definitely talking about that in the next committee, so stay ready for updates.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kidd. Mr. Oliver?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Kidd, can you just give like a brief summary of what's going to be within the new course? That functional environment too?
Generally, that was, that's in regard to special ed, so, that's, sorry for the mic. That's in regard to special ed. I don't have full details up top of my head, if you let me go back and look at some things very quickly, but I would generally ask Dr. Feltry that question.
The curriculum itself hasn't been written because it's based on the IEP needs of the students, so.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you, Ms. Nurse, thank you, Mr. Kidd. Mr. Oliver?
So the HR committee met on Wednesday, April 20th. We actually went over our allotted time, it hasn't been a while, I usually keep a pretty tight budget. We discussed some personnel matters, we did update on the agreement, substitute bus drivers, and sick time payout. We got to sit through the budget presentation, I think it was the third time for us, so that was exhilarating. We got to see it again tonight, I'm sure everybody here, as Paul said, was anxious to hear that. We did talk about the school start times, you know, it's likely going to be a reality, so we're trying to get ahead of it, we're trying to spitball some ideas of how we could modify it and work with it before we're mandated to do it. We also talked about some ideas to proactively look to start raising some fees, getting some extra income into the district. We made some recommendations to go back to the operations committee, so we are very proactively looking at ways to stop the reductions because we really have been hit hard from the state, and we went well after 7 o'clock.
So I'm going to add on to that because I was part of that discussion, and we do get emails from time to time regarding fees for sports and some families that have multiple kids and multiple seasons, and where that money, those fees, go to. They do go to the general fund, but just so everybody understands, the fees for sports, and this is looking at 2019 metrics, that's what we had available, and they're higher now than they were then, it's over a million dollar spend in sports, and we only collect approximately 15% of that through fees. So when people say, where does our money go? From the sports fees, it goes back into the general fund, which is in effect paying for the sports. So I know that gets asked a lot, it doesn't go specifically to the sport because it's coming back to the same fund that funds the sports. I mean, yeah, good, okay. All right, so I will cover both operations and governance, because Mr. Gillette is out today, so operations, finance. We covered a handful of items around damage that was repaired, mostly due to IDA, the HMS cabinetry damage, HMS unit ventilators, and the H, the high school pole barn floor replacement. We also discussed the sunny mead water lines for the unit ventilators to be replaced, with the idea being, we don't want to damage brand-new components with bad water lines. The high school gym- The high school gym floor is nearing completion. Do we have a, has it been finalized or are we still waiting?
As of today.
It's complete. Okay, so we can happily announce that the high school gym floor is complete. It was not at the time of the meeting. We also discussed the Eagle Scout project at Eris. We discussed some out-of-district placements. We did, between operation governance, discuss school start times. We were able to cover that in those meetings, and we discussed some options, some potential planning. But as I, as I'll note in the governance report, the earliest that that could possibly happen, I think, is the 2023-2024 school year. Even if we take full action now, there would not be a time, enough time to do that before, before next school year. And last but not least, we did interviews for board attorney for the upcoming year. And of course, budget presentation. In governance, we also reviewed bylaw 0143. The reason for that update is some of the wording in there, due to recent legal opinion, has been deemed as not allowed. So we had to make that change functionally to address that concern. We also added some additional language to ensure that the public is more fully aware of the process for appointing a new board member. That's what 0143 is regarding. And then, of course, like always, a budget presentation. All right? I think that's it. We'll now move on to the board president's report. All right, just a quick note on Mr. Rue, our recently appointed board member. His paperwork was submitted but have not received, has not been received by the district, so he was not able to be sworn in today. We will plan to have him sworn in during the regularly scheduled May 9th meeting, which is our, our next meeting. I did promise a couple of weeks ago some comments on the financial audit corrective action plan. As noted in the publicly facing CAP document from the standard annual audit, there were multiple instances of concern which were identified. All of these were also noted in our forensic report, which cannot be discussed further at this time. As you can note from the report, there were a number of actions taken over the previous year that were either in conflict with defined practices, especially as it relates to overtime and bid thresholds, two, due to a lack of defined process control with the issuance and timing of disbursements, or they did not happen as would be customary for the accountable individual roles for the other items. As part of the continued investigation by the board's special counsel, the board will receive formal recommendations to take appropriate actions on this matter and any other matters as presented. To this end, I will be appointing an ad hoc committee to address these issues and to make recommendations to the governance committee for policy adoption. This committee will address these listed items, any other items not yet disclosed from the forensic support report, any items or recommendations from our special counsel. All right, next item. As noted in the earlier resolution that was right at the beginning of this meeting, the Hillsborough Township Board of Education accepted the resignation of its longtime employee superintendent effective May 1st, 2022. The superintendent has indicated that the resignation is for personal reasons and to pursue other professional opportunities. Let's discuss how that role has been staffed up to this point and what this looks like in the short, medium, and long term. First, to discuss terminology, you may have heard the terms interim and acting as it relates to the superintendent role. These specifically defined terms, these are specifically defined terms as it relates to this and will matter moving forward. An acting superintendent is one who is covering for an unvacated superintendent position. An interim superintendent is someone who is covering for a vacated position, or better said, an open position that is not currently filled. To this end, Dr. Feltry has been the acting superintendent and not the interim. It could not have been named as the interim. Given that the board has now accepted Dr. Antuna's resignation effective May 1st, 2022, the board may and will immediately begin its search for a full-time replacement for the open position. The board would be able to officially hire someone after that May 1st date, the date of the formal resignation. As you can imagine, given that small window until that date, the board does not expect any conflict there. The current plan, assuming no immediate permanent superintendent is named, is for Dr. Feltry to continue to function as acting superintendent at least through graduation. The board will continually review progress on new hire and decide on the need for an interim superintendent for any period of time between graduation and the onboarding of a new superintendent. I would like to thank Dr. Feltry on behalf of the board and the community for all of her efforts during these past months as acting superintendent. And last but not least, I would like to thank Debbie Vassold for her service to the district. This is most likely her last meeting, and we have appreciated her support. Thank you. So I will, that concludes the board president's report, and I will pass it over to Dr. Feltry for the acting superintendent report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mariney. Yes, over there. Good evening. If you looked at the agenda on Friday compared to today, you will notice a change. So due to unforeseen circumstances, Ms. Benley is not able to do the school safety data system report for period one. She'll be doing that at the May 9th meeting. So we have other things to celebrate, though. So first up, I would like to invite Ms. Donetta Johnson and Mr. Chris Ireland to come up for a donation.
Good evening, Dr. Feltry and the Hillsborough Board of Education. My name is Donetta Johnson. My son, Jordan Johnson. We are honored to be here this evening. We're here to represent the Jonah Johnson Youth Scholarship Fund. This fund is dedicated to youth mental health and suicide prevention. In addition, the Allegra School of Music and Art has been in the community for over 22 years, and we are proud to support the children of Hillsborough in terms of their musical education. We believe that music education is mental health. And so on behalf of the children of Hillsborough specifically, in the music department, we would like to present a check to Mr. Ireland.
Thank you so much. Good night. The check is for $33,734 for music instrument support and equipment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support of our music program and our students. So, next up, we would like to recognize and celebrate a group of wonderful teachers and educational services professionals. We have a presentation, and I invite, when your slide comes up, to come up. Your principal will come up and join you. Mr. Mariney has a token of our, of the board's appreciation for all of the ways you make a difference, and we will honor you. So, on behalf of the Board of Education Administration, thank you all for joining us, sitting through the budget presentation, which I know is exactly why you came. This year, a total of 18 staff members were recognized as teachers of the year and educational services professionals of the year by parents, students, and colleagues. So over the past several months, principals have accepted nominations and formed a diverse panel to select this year's recipients. It is an honor to introduce each and every one of these dedicated individuals who truly make a difference to our students, schools, and community. They come to school every day with enthusiasm and encouragement to motivate and nurture students from all backgrounds and abilities. Thank you for all that you do. So teachers of the year, we'll start with them. Anjana Iyer unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but we do, you know, we celebrate her just the same. And this presentation, if you were not aware, was attached to the agenda, so that this can be an ongoing celebration. Ian Evans from the middle school. Please come up with your principal. And we invite you to stay up here for the photo op, you know, with everybody, so. Jessica Banis from Otten Road Intermediate School. Nicole DeLeon from Amsterdam Elementary School. Erin Chung from Hillsborough Elementary School. Michelle Sarek from Sunny Mead Elementary School. Grace Verano from Triangle Elementary School. Heather Bartholomew from Wood Fern Elementary School. And Lori Honigman from Woods Road Elementary School. Let's all look at Mr. Callahan for the photo opportunity, please. And another round of applause. And moving on to the educational services professionals of the year. It's a choice. We can all stay here, and we can bring them up, and we can all be one big happy family since you all work together. Is that good? Because I know standing up there awkwardly is something that everybody loves to do, but. Paul Johnson from Hillsborough High School. Tristan Garrettson from Hillsborough Middle School unfortunately could not be here tonight, but we will still celebrate her. Joan Murphy, Otten Road Intermediate School. Teresa Palmasano from Amsterdam Elementary School. Deanna Babaro from Hillsborough Elementary School. Christina Bruno, Sunny Mead Elementary School. Barbara Golden, Triangle Elementary School. Wawa Bukong, Wood Fern Elementary School. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. Mira Desai, Woods Road Elementary School. All right, now's the time for the photo op. Can, yeah, we're going to have to smush everybody together. Yep. Thank you for all that you do. Yeah, can we, should we take five minutes to just, to congratulate?
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess just to allow the folks to speak and congratulate, and we'll come back in five minutes. All in favor? All right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much. This is, this is the reason why we are in schools for these types of celebrations, so I really want to extend on behalf of the board and, and all of us, you know, a thank you again and celebration of all of that. A couple of items in the Acting Superintendent's Report. I'd like to take a moment to speak to the community about activities in our school as we continue to navigate the COVID pandemic. We are striving for as much normalcy as possible during a time where we are seeing an uptick in COVID cases and surrounding towns are reporting spreader events in their communities. As such, school decisions are being made depending on the activity, potential for maintaining physical distancing, the number of people in attendance, and overall safety for all in attendance. We are still in the position of having to balance normalcy with safety for all. As such, while we strive to maintain consistency across the district, this is an instance where we may see justifiable differences based on transmission in this community and/or the ability to safely accommodate the activity. On another note, celebratory note, and Mr. Chris Ireland, Supervisor of Fine Arts, recently shared with me that for the second year in a row, our district has been selected as one of the best communities for music education in America. To qualify for this designation, Mr. Ireland answered detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instructional time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making programs. Responses were verified with school officials and reviewed by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Forty-four out of 686 school districts in New Jersey and 738 out of the nation's 16,800 school districts received this designation. This places Hillsborough among the recognized 6% of districts in New Jersey and 4% of districts nationwide. So congratulations to our music program. We're very, very proud of them. And on the last note for my Acting Superintendent's Report, Dr. Milady, Principal of Amsterdam Elementary School, shared with me that Mrs. Robin Becker, speech teacher at Amsterdam Elementary, received the Dean's Recognition Award for Teaching at the adjunct level at Montclair State University. Congratulations and thank you for your dedication to the teaching profession and your work with our students every day. And that concludes my Acting Superintendent's Report.
All right. I would like to now move through approving the minutes. We have three items here. Ten dot one, motion to approve executive session minutes from March 14, 2022. Ten dot two, motion to approve public meeting minutes from March 14, 2022. And ten dot three, motion to approve public meeting minutes from March 28, 2022. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we will move to the first public comment session. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time. The meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about any items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights, a public employee is encompassed therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. If you would like to come up, please identify the agenda item that you would like to speak to. Going once, going twice. Seeing there is no individuals that like to speak, we will close this public comment session. And we will now move to the Acting Superintendent's Action Agenda.
Okay, and we're gonna have to do this without the prompting of the, because it kicked me off, so. The Acting Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows. 12.1 through 12.5. Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. Motion to approve low ropes course and curriculum for Otten Road Intermediate School. Motion to approve new course. Motion to approve field trip destination. And motion to approve overnight trip.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment, any discussion? Seeing none, let's take roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Treheo?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes. Motion passes.
All right. The Acting Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows. 13.1 through 13.12. Motion to approve retirements and resignations, and we thank those who are retiring for their years of service with us. 13.2, motion to approve revised mentor. Motion to approve revised leaves of absence. Motion to approve contract change. Motion to approve leaves of absence. Motion to approve appointments. Motion to approve a mentor. Motion to approve AP Proctors. Motion to approve sixth and seventh period coverage. Motion to pre-approve extra coverage. Motion to approve extra coverage. And motion to approve student teachers for the 2022-2023 school year.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we can move to roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hayo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marino?
Yes. Marino, sorry. Motion passes.
The Acting Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Operations Agenda as follows. 14.1 through, sorry, 14.18. Motion to approve monthly bills. Motion to approve monthly financials. Motion to approve line item transfers. Motion to approve financial status. Motion to approve resolution for four-year lease purchase. Motion to approve resolution for five-year lease purchase. Motion to approve proposal from EI Architects for design work. Motion to approve proposal from EI for referendum contract extension. Motion to approve change orders with Amco Enterprises. Motion to approve change orders with HNS Construction and Mechanico. Motion to approve HMS cabinetry replacement due to Ida. Motion to approve HHS pole barn floor replacement due to Ida. Motion to approve out-of-district placement, twice. And motion to approve tuition contracts. Motion to approve joint transportation agreement. Motion to approve bylaw for first reading and motion to accept donation.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
We'll go to, I've come at that. So we've got a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion by the board? Ms. Nurse?
I know with Mr. Gillette here, it might be hard to answer, but 14.7, the motion to approve proposals for EI Architects for design work, is that from referendum or did that happen after referendum, it was a newer project? Does anybody know?
So it's coming from the referendum, but it's part of, in Sunny Mead, the, the water lines that feed the univentilators that are in the system are in this lab and they are deteriorating and is part of what Mr. Marino mentioned earlier during the Operations Committee Report. And this design work is to basically get the water to the univentilators in a different method. It's going to, they're gonna design a way to bring it through the ceilings and the hallway and then branch off to each classroom as needed. So it's, it is referendum work, but it is not work that was in the original scope. So it's outside the original scope of the work, of, of the design work.
Okay. Can we separate 14.7 out?
Sure. Okay. Any other comments? All right, so we will now take roll on 14.1 through 14.6 and 14.8 through 14.
18.
18.
So moved.
All right, we take roll on those items.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Treheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marino?
Yes. Motion passes. Now we'll take roll on 14.7.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Treheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marino?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, we will move to our second public comment session. I'll repeat the following. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute timeline on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. I welcome you to provide your name and address in three minutes.
Susan Anderson, Case Drive.
Thank you.
My question here tonight is, can anyone tell me who is responsible for answering questions on specific issues on curriculum in this district? My questions have centered around critical race theory and social-emotional learning. Who is held accountable when the system breaks down and the taxpayer is told by the Acting Superintendent that she will no longer engage in discussions on these matters? After doing research on a high school elective race in the United States, I met with Dr. Feltray to point out the glaring imbalance in the resources used in the bibliography. The list reads like a who's who of the progressive left. Her follow-up to me after that meeting acknowledged that the bibliography could be more balanced and the curriculum writers will look to modify the content going forward. Let's hold them accountable to do just that. Suspecting that this lack of balance in the classroom went far beyond this particular elective, I then took a deeper look into social-emotional learning, or SEL, and terms like inherent bias, systemic racism, white supremacy, so forth and so on. The Board of Ed had a training on this in November on inherent bias. While your children are being taught to examine their inherent bias, it seems as though those teaching that are creating curriculum are above examining their own. That doesn't seem very equitable to me. I wrote to the administration on November 12 with issues very specific to SEL and my concern about the glaring imbalance in the resources, again leading far left with very little counterpoint. I received a reply from Dr. Feltray on November 15 stating that she had pressing curricular matters to complete but then would attend to responding to my concerns. Six weeks later, no response, so I wrote again. On December 28, she finally responded to my email and also at that time told me she will no longer engage in discussion with me on these issues. So what changed between November and December? Is she just tired of hearing from me? This is completely unacceptable. So I wrote a complaint letter to the board on January 6 asking if we as taxpayers should have an expectation of responsiveness, accountability, and professionalism from those whose salaries we pay. No response. A second email sent on February 12, and I did get a brief reply from the board president, but he dodged the main issue of my letter, which was the administration cutting off all dialogue with me. I wrote back on February 16 expressing disappointment that he cherry-picked with issues he wanted to answer. No reply. I wrote again on March 21, two and a half months since my initial email. It's now April 25 and I'm still here and I'm still waiting. No reply. This cannot possibly be the standard anybody in this district is willing to accept. Parents, get involved. These are your children. Let no one usurp your role as parent. Today, it's my questions that are arrogantly being ignored and dismissed. Tomorrow, they could be yours. Let them hear from you, and I'm still waiting for my answers.
You come up?
Good evening. We're Sayan Rahman from Hillsborough High School's robotics team, Team Samita. And tonight, we will let me talk about the great strides our team has made recently. To begin, our competitive season started off with district competitions we attended in March. We emerged from Bridgewater victorious as we maintained a solid winning streak on Sunday and earned a place as district winner. This was the first time we had won district winner award in five years, and we were incredibly proud of our team and how far we had come, especially after not having a season in two years. We then attended another district competition in Montgomery, where we washed away once again victorious, this time with the Engineering Inspiration Award, which celebrates outstanding success and advancing respect and appreciation for engineering within a team, school, organization, and community. We then went on to the regional championships at Lehigh University, where our team made several memories and learned many lessons for next year's competitive season. We didn't qualify for world championships, however. One of our very own team members made the Dean's List finalists, Ross Knight. Just last week, she was able to go to the FRC World Championships in Houston. Just last week, she was able to go to the FRC World Championships in Houston to meet with other finalists, Dean Cameron and Pro Packer of the First Organization.
Other than our technical accomplishments, this past season has been very successful in the community outreach and business sides of our team. Our short-term program has allowed members of our team to quickly become more involved by creating their own initiatives to express their unique ways of giving back to the community. Through this method, we've created 11 new initiatives, where practice states that they all impact the community and schools for the better. We can't wait to continue growing. To finish, we'd like to send a big thank you to you all, the Board of Education, for supporting us throughout our competitive season. Thank you and good night.
Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire Court. First, I want to applaud you for coming up with creative solutions to the budget. At this time last year, the budget was unanimously passed. It included maintaining staff and even adding for teaching positions, however, that did not happen. So I am worried that that won't happen again this year, that hopefully the budget will be followed. And I'd also like to applaud the staff that was honored tonight, and two of the Teachers of the Year were former students of mine, Ms. Chung and Ms. Bartholomew. But I'm mostly here to speak as a member of the Municipal Alliance, which is dedicated to providing education and awareness about substance abuse. To that end, this week, there will be two screenings of the documentary, The First Day, which Ms. Treheo spoke about at the last board meeting. This is not your typical anti-drug abuse documentary. In The First Day, Chris Heron speaks at various student assemblies. You may have heard of Chris Heron. He played basketball in college and the NBA. Or you may know him from his visits to schools when he spoke about his own drug addiction and how awful it was. Or you may have seen the ESPN 30 for 30 documentary about Chris Heron. But The First Day is different. It doesn't focus on the worst days of addiction. It focuses on how it starts, hence the title, The First Day. No one starts out saying, hey, I really want to be a heroin addict. No one says, I can't wait to be an alcoholic. Drug and alcohol abuse starts out so innocuously, often at the vulnerable age of our students. And no one is immune, including the most wonderful kid from a great family with caring parents. So I'm inviting everyone here to one of the viewings of The First Day. There will be a viewing tomorrow, Tuesday, April 26, at 12:30 PM at the Municipal Building. There will also be a viewing this Wednesday evening, April 27, at 7:00 PM. On a personal note, I have lost former students and family members to addiction. Sometimes addiction kills relationships and quality of life. Sometimes addiction kills the person. Sometimes it does both. In this very moving documentary, Chris Heron speaks with great empathy for everyone. When he is speaking about drug and alcohol use among young students, he makes this beautiful statement related to drinking and using drugs. Quote, "To the kids who don't have to, I applaud you. To the kids who do, I understand. There's nothing weird about the both of you. Help one another. High school is hard." End quote. And it's hard being a parent of a teenager. So again, I invite all of you, all of you, to attend a viewing of The First Day at the Municipal Building either tomorrow, Tuesday, April 26, at 12:30 PM, or this Wednesday evening, April 27, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Stacy Seeta, 1229 Millstone River Road. I'm here today to address the health curriculum standards which the state has put forth for us, which, incidentally, I believe that our school system has already been teaching to and satisfying. I know there are members of the community that believe gender and sex education do not belong in schools because they're not academic. They don't actually believe this because the school instruction exists that is not academic, looking at physical education, sports, the dangers of drugs, and drunk driving. Yet everyone accepts them as appropriate and important for school. We recognize their value. Introducing children at a young age to the basic spectrum of gender and different types of families is essential. Putting aside the fact that every child knows someone on the LGBTQ+ spectrum, even if they don't realize it yet, children are not porn intolerant. They learn it from somewhere. They are taught to be homophobic and transphobic. They're taught to be racist, ableist, xenophobic, et cetera. Children must be exposed to families that are not like them because that is the world they live in. They need to have the words to express what they are feeling and who they are. If schools are silenced and not able to demonstrate respect for people who are not like them, it sets the stage for bullying, and that is alarming. If you don't want, if you don't see the proof of this, just look at how we have to legislate basic decency by passing laws that prevent discrimination. My wife, our child, and myself have been deeply affected by this intolerance, both by adults and children. My wife, Stefania Lockwoods, is as passionate and vocal as she is because she's a target just for existing, and more importantly, because she understands the suffering of children who don't understand what they are feeling, and wants to do everything she can to help those children not suffer like she did. I believe the board understands the importance of the state health curriculum standards. I hope it's in the message that our community supports and values all of our children and their families.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will open it up to the board for any comment.
I have some reports.
Please.
So the Municipal Alliance, I just wanted to report on the Municipal Alliance that had met on Friday, April 8. And just two highlights, we heard from guest speaker Jeffrey Phillips, who is from Freedom Trail. Freedom Trail is a community wellness center in Somerville, New Jersey. Its model is a collaborative support program that promotes the wellness and recovery of people with the lived experience of behavioral health conditions. It is a free drop-in center for adults and offers two support meetings a day, both in-person and virtual. Their calendar is available on the CSPNJ website, that's Collaborative Support Program New Jersey website. If you search under Services, then Community Wellness Center, and then Freedom Trail. And then, so this is like the calendar of their, of their events. Then Ms. Stats, thank you, spoke about The First Day, so I won't review that. There was, oh, the other thing that we talked about in the Municipal Alliance is the 100 and Central Regional High School Coding Club created a help app. So it's this app that's available on Google Play and also on the App Store. That's basically a quick reference application with phone numbers and resources. And basically, it's, you know, you are not alone, letting people know that there are resources that are available for them on the help app, for example, second floor, the 24/7 confidential anonymous helpline for New Jersey's youth and young adults, and the Trevor Project for LGBTQ youth. So that's just an easy way to access that information if you know someone who's in need. And then I just want to remind the community that Hope for Tomorrow will be May 6, Friday, at the Municipal Building, and that's a free event. There's also a fundraiser for Borough Safe on Friday, May 20, which is Puppy Yoga. It will be a fundraiser to support Borough Safe. And then, Mr. Marini, I wasn't sure if you were going to talk about the Aris Wizards? No? Okay. So there is, at the Otten Road Intermediate School, the Harlem Wizards are playing the Aris Teachers, which is going to be a pretty great fundraising event. It will be on Saturday, May 21, at 6:00 PM at the high school. And I have a scan thing if you wanted to come up and scan that, but also tickets are available online. You can probably Google it on Facebook. All right, thank you. That concludes my report.
I'll be there. Thank you for the report, Mr. Heo. Any other board members that want to make any comment? Dr. Feltray?
Yes. Unfortunately, this afternoon, we received news regarding the untimely passing of one of our high school teachers, Mr. Mark Wissie. As a school community, we express our condolences to the family, friends, and students of Mr.
Thank you. I will take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.